With the roll call, please.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Walter Jennings.
Here.
Joel Kelsey.
Here.
Robert Doughty.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Neil Helm.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the minutes. I'll give you a mo- a minute to review them and entertain a motion at your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Uh, next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir. It's as presented.
Okay, all entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Move on to new business, which will be the minor subdivision replat of Wheeler Heights.
The proposed minor subdivision slash replat is located in the northwest portion of the county. The project site is located along the north side of Wheeler Road. The lot consists of a residence and a metal shed. The lot is described as part of Lot 21 of the Wheeler Heights subdiv- or development. The lot is surveyed at 2.59 acres. The applicants are proposing to take this existing 2.59 acre lot and replat it into two smaller lots. Proposed Lot 21A will be 1.59 acres and retain the metal building. Proposed Lot 21B will be one acre and retain the residence. Each proposed lot will have adequate frontage. A septic inspection was conducted and there were no concerns found. So this is a view of Wheeler Road looking west from proposed Lot 21A. And this is looking east. And the metal shed on proposed Lot 21A is on the left. Proposed Lot 21B is on the right with the existing residence. Notifications were mailed to all surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the lot's boundary. To date, staff has only received one comments form indicating that the neighbor is in favor of the project. And at this time, staff would like to recommend approval of the Wheeler Heights Minor Subdivision Replat with the following conditions. And these conditions have not changed since your receipt of the staff report last week. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, uh, is there anything the proponent would like to add at this point? Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minor subdivision replat of lots 21A and 21B of Wheeler Heights with staff comments.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. We will move on to the Blackburn community.
The Blackburn Community Covenant Church Conditional Use Permit Request. This project is located, uh, in the southern half of the county, approximately west of I-49 as indicated by the pink star. The proposal is located along the north side of State Highway 74, also known as Devil's Den Road, in the small community of Blackburn. The entire parcel is approximately 41 acres. However, only one acre will be utilized for the actual project. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit to allow the development and operation of a church building and associated grounds in an area that's zoned for agricultural and single-family residences of one unit per acre. The blue area represents where the one acre is positioned within the 41 acres. And these are the conditions of allowance of conditional uses. Criteria for allowance, um, of conditional uses, item A2 states that the property owners within 300 feet of the applicant's parcel boundary will be notified by certified mail. On October 24th, a total of 13 notifications were mailed out certified. At the time of the creation of this presentation, only one comment had been received and this property owner was in favor. The applicant is responsible for ensuring that utilities are made available to the project location. The applicant's plans state that their contractor will ensure that the proposed utilities will, uh, will be constructed to the specifications and standards of that particular agency. A septic permit has already been filed and approved with the Department of Health. The applicant will place the lateral lines along the eastern side of the property. The septic field will be protected using eight-foot-long railroad ties. Criteria items A4 through A7 are a bit more subjective. Criteria item A4 states that the proposed use must be compatible with the surrounding area. Utilizing data from the assessor's office, staff noted that the majority of the uses in the area is agricultural. This is represented in the green. The parcels that are immediately adjacent to the project, um, are of course agricultural by use. Across East Devil's Den Road is an exempt property that's indicated in the reddish. And the purple parcels are residential. While a church is not exactly compatible with an agricultural or residential use, staff would like to note that the exempt property across the street seen in the reddish on the previous slide, which is circled here in yellow, um, is in fact an older community church. And, uh, this is the Blackburn Community Church. The closest residences on the adjoining parcels vary from approximately 75 feet all the way to 2,300 feet. And here is a close-up of the house that's 75 feet away. This is the closest residence to the parcel. Standing in the proposed driveway, one is able to clearly see the house across the street. Staff feels that while the house is in close proximity to the proposed Blackburn Community Covenant Church, the residence has been next door to the older Blackburn Community Church for quite some time. Leaving the traffic and parking across the street to the new location may actually be considered a bonus by this new property owner. Criteria items A through seven. A5 states that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety morals, comfort, or general welfare. Standing in the proposed driveway for the project, this is a view of the site distance looking southwest. And this is looking northwest. The proposed church is located on a very straight portion of East Devil's Den Drive. There were no concerns with the site distance. Staff does not feel that a church would be detrimental to anyone's morals in the area or even outside of the area. Staff also feels that the very nature of a church is inherently safe by nature. Any overflow parking, if needed, will be directed across the streets to the older Blackburn Community Church. Staff also feels, again, that the closest residents may actually be relieved that the church activities are not taking place across the street instead of directly next door. At this time, staff recommends approval of the Blackburn Community Covenant Church Conditional Use Permit with the following conditions. These conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, is there anything the proponent would like to add at this point? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it to the public, bring it back to the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Blackburn Community Covenant Church CUP, uh, as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion passes. We'll move on to the Genesis countertop.
The Genesis countertops and accessories conditional use permit request is located in the northwest portion of the county. The project's parcel is situated along the west side of Haberton, Washington County 89, and north of Guy Terry, Washington County 92. The building that the applicant hopes to use is already in existence. The applicant also owned the vacant lot to the south that has frontage on the corner of Haberton and Guy Terry. The building was a prior home to the White River Cafe. The current owners of this property is the Vaie family. They are here to seek a conditional use permit in order to operate a granite countertop fabrication business in an area that is zoned for agricultural and single-family residences of one units per resident- per acre. And these are the criteria of allowance for conditional uses. The Vaie family has fulfilled item A1. On October 24th, staff sent a total of 13 notification, uh, certified notices to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the project's parcel's boundary. Staff has received one email stating opposition to the project. Their main concern was silica dust hazard, noise hazard, and nuances, increase in truck traffic, and a negative effect on established businesses in the area. A copy of this email is in your update packet. So again, the building is already existing. It already has, uh, utilities connected to it. Further extension of utility lines, uh, water lines, or further septic work are not needed. Here is a view of the building from Guy Terry. And here's the building from Haberton. The Vaie family has already fulfilled items A1 through A3. Items A4 through A7 are a bit more subjective. A4 states that the allowances for conditional uses, uh, must be compatible with the surrounding area. The majority of the uses in the area are residential and agricultural. The agri uses, as noted by the assessor's office, are in green. The lighter blue-green are commercial use properties. The yellow parcels are considered residential. The project's parcel is assessed as commercial by the assessor's office. Across the street from the property is a brewery slash restaurant. The applicant's building is on the left and the brewery slash restaurant is on the right. Approximately less than a quarter mile away is another commercial business. This is a wedding slash gathering venue that also has a winery on site. While our granite countertop production facility is not inherently compatible with the surrounding area, commercial uses do exist. The brewery that's across the street has hours online posted as 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. The event center and the win- slash winery down the street and around the corner on Guy Terry has hours online posted as 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sundays, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. Hours Thursdays through Saturdays are 11:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. The applicant's hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with Saturdays by appointment only. Deliveries will be very minimal, possibly twice a week. The applicant is proposing to use a water jet cutter in order to eliminate dust and noise pollution. Also, the applicants will place filters and dust collectors throughout the building in order to minimize any airborne pollutants. While there are many residences in the area, the ones shown here are the closest to the project's parcel. They range from an estimated 233 feet to 430 feet. Again, the building is already existing and has served as a restaurant in the past. Staff feels that the infrequent customer traffic and deliveries will not be detrimental to the flow of traffic that already exists. Deliveries and customer visits will occur within the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with some Saturdays. Many people are at work or away from their homes during these hours. Staff also feels that the traffic generated from the brewery and the winery would be greater than what the proposed granite countertop production facility will be. Also, Haberton and Guy Terry are classified as rural major collectors by the Arkansas Department of Transportation. Rural major collectors link places in the county to larger towns or cities. They do expect quite a number of vehicles on them daily. So this is the view looking east on Guy Terry. And this is looking west. And this is what is directly across. And this is looking north on Haberton. This is south. And this is what's directly across. And at this time, staff recommends approval of the Genesis countertops and accessories conditional use permit with the following conditions. And these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Yeah, I know you said that they were gonna have, um, a wet, I'm assuming a wet saw, to cut down on the dust. Do they have anything in place for dust control or ventilation on this?
The applicant is here and they can explain it a little bit more than I can just because of more experience with the industry.
Is there any estimate of the noise in decibels on this?
Um, there is not. Um, I personally have not heard it, but, um, this morning I did watch some, um, YouTube videos. And the various ones that I heard were actually not very noisy. Um, not like a traditional wood saw with the high-pitched screeching and buzzing. Um, it just, it seemed very minimal to me.
Maybe the applicant can cover that one.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, is the proponent here and would like to add anything or answer the questions, please? You might state your name for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Frank Basquez.
Okay, uh, you have a couple of questions for him?
Yeah, I know you said you were gonna use that wet saw.
Yes, sir.
What other steps do you have in order to, um, cut down on the dust control? Or do you have some type of ventilation to take care of that, too?
Yes, sir. We have a big dust collector that we're installing in there that, uh, will be right in the middle of, uh, where we're working. We, um, also have, uh, everything that we operate is with, uh, water. Uh, there's water directly on the blade, there, and there, no dust, absolutely no dust that comes off, other than the water spray. Uh, we will have a water recirculation. We will be reusing the same water. We have a, um, uh, I can't think of the name of that filter, but it's a water filter. And, uh, it goes through, comes out, and when it comes out, it's, it's good as drinking water.
So you'd be able to operate dust-wise whether you've got the doors open or closed?
Yes, sir.
Can you address the noise, uh, produced by the-
The noise, I don't remember the decimal, but it is below the, uh, it's allowed, it's in within the range that it's allowed.
Can you talk while it's running?
Pardon?
Can you, can you, can you converse between people when it's whilst running?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay.
Are there any other questions of the proponent at this point? If you have nothing further to add, well then I'll ask for public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from public that would like to address this issue? Okay, come forward and please state your name.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Don Kephart, K-E-P-H-A-R-T. And, um, I'm here, uh, representing the Bridlewood Estates Property Owners Association. Uh, I'm the president of the association and have been for a couple of years. We've lived in Bridlewood, my family and I, for, uh, five or six years. And, uh, just a quick word about Bridlewood. We have 50 lots, about two acres each. Uh, 41 families living in Bridlewood. And honestly, uh, we only learned of this issue at three o'clock this afternoon, but my email and text is just blown up from people. You know how it goes. Word travels fast. So I just wanted to express our concerns. I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Bridlewood, by the way, is just southwest of the intersection of Haberton and Guy Terry, so, you know, right in that area. And I would say our closest homes to this facility are about maybe two-tenths of a mile. We could check that with Google Maps, but somewhere in that, in that range. We have, uh, very, very strong concerns about, uh, a number of things. First of all, obviously granite is heavy. So, uh, raw material slabs will be coming in by truck, no doubt. And if you look at the, the aerial view of the building, you'll note that that parking lot and the driveways in and out are, um, gravel at best. It's a, it's a very dirty, dusty environment. So just trucks driving in are going to stir up a lot of dust. So, raw material coming in by truck, uh, and then, uh, whatever noise comes from the process. Um, I'm very familiar with, um, uh, the, uh, water jet cutting. I, I'm an engineer and operated manufacturing facilities my whole career, and we had many water jet facilities. I was with ITT Industries and, uh, a company called Enpro Industries out of Charlotte, uh, North Carolina. So anyway, very familiar with the process, and I love manufacturing businesses. And I hope that there's a, maybe a better location for this one, but, uh, I'd love to see the business grow and flourish. The, you know, one of the process wastes that comes from, um, water jet cutting, and it's captured in the table underneath the water jet machine, is sludge. So it's the dust, the particulate matter that comes from the granite, the, the cut, uh, mixed with the water. And certainly the water and this sludge can be separated, but trust me, the sludge has gotta go somewhere. Uh, it might go into drums. Eventually, it's gonna have to be, uh, taken away. Here comes some more trucks. And, uh, so we're concerned about all this truck traffic. Also about the noise associated with that, maybe not process noise, I'm not sure. But, um, we just see a lot of potential noise, the dust that I mentioned from the parking, the roads in and out of that facility. And whatever processed dust might exist, as, um, you know, there's a mention of dust collectors. Very familiar with them, but at some point, you have to blow down those dust collectors to free up the dust collector bags from the, from the dust. And again, you've got dust to deal with. The problem with this dust is that, um, granite generally is at least 70% silica. And when silica becomes airborne, it can lead to silicosis. It's a health and safety issue. OSHA is all over silicosis. And in my email, I, I included a link to, um, uh, information from the U.S. federal government about silicosis. Uh, silicosis also, uh, leads to, it's a carcinogen, silica is, leads to lung cancer. So all of this, I, I love manufacturing. We just don't want this in our backyard. I'm sure you hear that all the time, being members of the planning commission. We're, we're concerned, uh, about the health and safety factors in the area. Also, the effect, the negative impact that we are concerned this could have on our property values. And again, you know, 41 families, I, I just represent a large body of concern, uh, on that issue. So, um, I didn't hear any discussion about the health and safety issues of silica. I would ask you to please either vote no at this point for this conditional use permit or at least postpone it so that the health and safety issues can be discussed and considered and that, um, we can perhaps mo- more properly, uh, express our very strong objections to this being right across the street from, uh, all these homes. And, uh, those are the comments I wanted to offer. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here from the public that wants to address this item? Okay. Ma'am, would you come forward? I see some other hands, too. We'll try to get to you.
Hi, Donna Stahl. We live, um, very, very close to this, um, property. This is on Guy Terry and Haberton, on the corner. We are directly across the street of Guy Terry on the corner. So there's literally just a street between us. And this property is a rental property, currently houses a couple with a young child. And they are concerned about the health issue. Our house sits above the rental. And I don't know that the health issue would be that much for us since we're up on a hill. But the noise issue is dramatic. We live not too far from his subdivision, and right down the street is the winery. And we can hear, they're probably a half a mile. We can hear the talking and laughing from the winery if we're sitting outside on our deck. Same thing with the brewery, which is directly across the street from this property. So the sound comes up. And we have enough sound already. We don't really want anymore. And I, and I know most people work, we don't, we're home all day. The renter is home all day except for her husband, so she's outside. In the summertime, in the springtime, you'll see them out in that yard playing all the time. So their concern is not only the noise, but the health issue. We're a little concerned about the trucks, the big trucks coming in with raw material, um, the dust and the noise. So our biggest concerns are health and, um, noise. Property values, we're in the process of looking at our rental and our house and getting some estimates about maybe selling it at some point. And I'm concerned that having that commercial business there may be detrimental to that. I'm not sure. Anyway, that's what I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, there were some other hands, uh, okay. One of you come forward, whichever one.
Good evening. I'm Brad Henry. I'm a property owner in the Rolling Stones' new subdivision out there and actually planning on starting construction of a home next week, about 600 yards from this proposed site. Uh, I noticed the housing demographics and density on the map, I think, is probably just a little bit behind the curve 'cause that is probably one of the more dynamic areas of the county over the last few months. There's been a lot of real estate transactions, a lot of new home sites, a lot of new work up and down Haberton, uh, for housing. I think areas used to be a lot of chicken barns and farms have now been subdivided. My specific concern on this issue is, one, the noise. It's possible that the noise abatement may be sufficient to make this a quiet operation. I have no personal experience with it, uh, and don't know anything about it. But I would like to, uh, have that investigated and see just what is the decimal level of this activity because the location of it is kind of a natural amphitheater facing towards the east, uh, towards the White River. So that, the noise obviously is a concern. The bigger concern is the potential contamination with the silica dust from the operation. The containment procedures may be very adequate and contain the dust and the pollutant from that. But again, I don't know. I don't have personal experience with that. I do have problems with family members with severe respiratory illnesses, asbestosis, and silicone exposure. And once the stuff does get in the environment, it tends to drift, uh, a good distance. What distance? I don't know. I think that has to be evaluated and just say, is there a health concern that has not been identified at this point? And find out if it's real or not. Also, the parking lot of this facility is approximately 200 yards from the White River. Also, the parking lot of this facility is approximately 200 yards from the White River wetlands there. The water will drain directly out of the parking lot into the creek, and less than 200 yards later, it's into estuary. So, it's a, if they can do abatement and control all these missions and hazards, I'm, I want to think it's incumbent upon us to look into that and see exactly, is there a threat or not? Blindly put it there, I think, is a potential issue, because asbestos causes problems, and this is not asbestos, but it is another, silica is being recognized as a very serious respiratory health issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual, please.
My name is Michael Cross. I am also a recent property owner and building a home in the Roland Hill, uh, Rolling Stone subdivision. I want to speak about the medical part of this, just to, I'm sure a lot of you already know what silicosis is and what silica is. Silica is a breakdown product, the dioxide product of silicone occurs in the crystalline, amorphous and impure forms in quartz, opal, and sand respectively. I have a morbidity and mortality weekly, weekly report from the Centers of Disease Control. This is September of 2019. Also have a hazard alert from the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, also known as OSHA, and also the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, NIOSH, as well. They have identified exposure to silica as a health hazard to workers involving manufacturing, finishing, installation. What they are proposing is stone fabrication. While it's a good industry, I was in the, a place Tuesday, and went into actual facility, there's dust everywhere. It is loud, hard to breathe, immediately caused a lot of health issues, me wearing a very thick mask. I think it's in a poor location for our communities in the next door, the Beaver Watershed District. We don't want anything contaminating our water, much less the air. Silicosis is a incurable occupational lung disease, incurable, okay? You inhale this stuff, it damages your lung, and it's irreversible. It's caused by inhal- inhaling particles of respirable crystalline silica, triggers inflammation, fibrosis in the lungs, progressive, irreversible. It's also sho- associated with lung infections, notably tuberculosis. It weakens the lungs so bad, it's been known to cause lung cancer, emphysema, autoimmune diseases, on and on and on, and it's, it happens in most, a lot of the workers, it can happen to workers who cut, polish, or grind stone materials, and can be exposed, exposed to the silica dust. So, this report is in regards to 18 critical ill, some have died that were in California, Colorado, Texas, and Washington. This is not a good location for this business. It is community, it is agriculture. I, I see nothing that this needs to be near our water supply system. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, are there any, okay, go ahead and come forward.
My name's Harvey Smith, and I developed that Rolling Stone estate development, and it's just, it sits on the lake, it's real quiet. The, the, all the people that bought lots, and they just went like that because it's such a great location, and it's so tranquil out there. This, my big, I have big concerns with property value, mainly the health risk, and I've got the first law in there, so I'm right across the street, and I'm gonna be, right now, as they, as Dr. Cross pointed out, I believe it was him, that said, it's, it's kind of like a natural amphitheater, and where I'd like to have a deck, and in, during my retirement period, I, I can hear the brewery, I just hear people, I can hear their conversations, it's just so amplified, and I, I don't mind hearing people laughing and talking, but if I hear a saw going all day long, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'll lose it. And I'm, I, I don't care how muffled it is, if you hear a saw, and it's going on all the time, it's worse than having a neighbor with a barking dog. So, that, and then the, the silica is a drifting particle, and it's just, I, I, I don't care how, how much they filter it, there's gonna be some that gets out, and it doesn't take much to cause a problem with your health. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other individuals? Okay, C9, I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the committee for questions, comments.
Hey, Nathan, is, when a project is brought forth like this, and the individual departments are notified, is the health department one of them, and this is the only comment they sent back in reference to this particular business?
Yes, sir.
This, this building was, wasn't a lawn and garden facility?
It was, and it's also been a bottling operation for Saddle Rock.
Okay.
Does, is there any state or federal permit that they have to obtain to do this process?
Not terribly sure, sir. That'd be between them and the state and the, and the federal agency.
Could the proponent come forward?
Okay, I was wondering, is there any permit that you're working under from the state, or?
No, sir, there's no permit required. But I, from hearing their concerns, I hear the concerns of silicosis and the noise, the, the dust from the parking lot, all that, I think will be generating less than the dust, any, less than any of the other businesses around there. There's probably, at the most, four cars for us. We, if we have deliveries, they might be once a week, twice a week at the most. The, the dust from that parking lot, it's gonna be there whether we're there or not. No matter who's there, they're gonna generate the same dust or more. Silicosis, he was talking about granite being silica, granite has no silica in it. It is quartz and feldspar and mica, so there is no silica in, in granite at all.
That's not true.
It is true.
It is not true.
Okay, you want to look it up? I've got it right here.
Yeah, I've got it here as well.
And.
95% in granite.
So, anyway, the silica, if they're talking about the silicosis, that would be mostly for the employees. The dust that gets out, you know, can be very minimal, and, and I don't think it's gonna reach any of the neighbors. The noise, they, they hear people talking outside from the brewery, that's because they're outside on the deck. They hear the people from the event center, they're all outside. We're inside, the building is very well insulated, so, and the water, we recirculate in the same water, we're using the same water, we're not running it down anywhere, and the water from the runoff of the road, well, that's nothing we can control.
There was some talk about the, the waste product. How do you dispose of it?
Pardon?
How do you dispose of your waste?
It goes in, goes in a dumpster.
And?
To the landfill.
The landfill, okay.
Okay. He's not required, even in the county, to have an EPA permit or OSHA guideline permit? Would that operation?
We have our process, sir, and we've completed our process. Going through the health department is the big one, being signed off on by the fire marshal for the fire code is another big one, but we don't have any EPA guidelines in the county code, so we haven't reached out.
So, the only permit he's required to get is a business permit?
Yes, sir, and a conditional use permit. Adding to that, if he were to be noncompliant with EPA, that would be between him and the EPA.
Okay, other questions, comments?
And we're not the only business in Arkansas where EPA would be concerned right now.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the Genesis countertop accessory CUP.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in second. Let's go ahead and do roll call on this, please.
Philip Humbard?
Yes.
Walter Jennings?
Yes.
Joel Kelsey?
No.
Robert Doughty?
Yes.
Jay Piercy?
Yes.
Neil Helm?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to the Ozark Sanctuary Cemetery, please.
Once I'm done with my presentation, I'll set you up.
The Ozark Sanctuary Cemetery CUP request is for a cemetery land use on a property located northeast corner of the county, near Nob Hill, just off Groth Road. It is in a rural area of the county. Taking access off Honeysuckle Road, the subject property is 39-acre parcel adjacent to an existing historic cemetery, shown here with a red X. The existing cemetery has some graves that are 150 years old. Additionally, the subject property has been protected by conservation easement, which restricts certain types of development, even, even limiting the types of vegetation that can be planted. In the site plan, you can see the existing Joyce Cemetery. The proposed access road will go through the Joyce Cemetery parking area, through the gate, and provide a parking area along the northern fence line of the cemetery, of the Joyce Cemetery, excuse me. From there, groups can make their way back to the Western Meadow, to the Ozark Sanctuary Cemetery in the top left corner of this slide. There are future plans for a covered structure at the western edge of the parking area, shown here with my pointer. If the applicants desire water or electric service at their covered structure, they'll need to apply for that service from the individual utilities. Otherwise, Washington County Fire Marshal will regulate the structure. The county engineer has reviewed the site plan and determined a stormwater drainage report is not warranted at this time. This diagram shows the approximately 9.2 acres the proposed cemetery will occupy, and this diagram shows a proposed cemetery in white, outlined in green, with the approximate distances from a few key areas of the property to the flood plain to the north. It's approximately 475 feet from the property line to the flood plain, 975 feet from the cemetery boundary to the flood plain, and approximately 1,500 feet to the flood plain from the head of the draw that would carry stormwater north to the creek. At approximately 975 feet from the boundary of the cemetery to the boundary of the flood plain, this distance exceeds the 250-meter distance recommended by the World Health This is a photo of the Eastern Meadow directly behind the Joyce Cemetery. It is of the same character as the Western Meadow that is being proposed for the cemetery, and is also protected under the conservation easement. This is the existing parking area for the Joyce Cemetery. Parking area for the proposed cemetery would be very similar to this one, small and grassy, with very little disturbance. Neighbor notification letters went out to eight neighbors, with two of those being the applicants, and one going to the Joyce Cemetery. And at this time, I've received 14 comment forms submitted back to the planning department, 12 in favor and two opposed. The opposed comments from those comment forms are based on water quality and property value concerns. The big issue for the cemetery proposal is that it's a green burial cemetery, requiring alternative-style biodegradable caskets, or no caskets at all, shallow graves, no vault at each grave, and no headstone markers. When planning staff contacted the county coroner about the proposal, he expressed concern for the public health. However, he stated his concerns would be gone if the Department of Health were to approve it. At this time, the proposal has not been sent to the Department of Health yet, because the applicants want to have some assurance, the CUP request will be approved if the health department approves it, before they go to the expense of putting together the plans and the perk tests that must accompany the submittal to the health department. Planning staff is also contacted by Beaver Watershed Alliance with support for the proposed cemetery. The alliance stated that the transmission of communicable diseases by viruses or bacteria could be concern, could, should not be cause for concern, as long as the guidelines of the Green Burial Council are followed, which include, due diligence in choosing a site with appropriate soil key, excuse me, let me repeat, due diligence in choosing a site with appropriate soil is key. Soil maps ensure that a site is viable. Town or city engineers are resource personnel who can provide and help interpret local and U.S. government soil overlay maps. Digging test pits and having them professionally analyzed prior to initiating cemetery status is advised. Beaver Water District worked with the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust to purchase this conservation easement where the cemetery will be located, and they commented on this CUP request, stating they have no issues with the CUP request as proposed. They go on to say that impacts from the planned conservation earth burial cemetery will be minimal compared to other land practices in the area. As far as Washington County ordinances are concerned, this proposed cemetery will be in compliance if and when the health department reviews and provides their approval of the proposed cemetery land use. With that, at this time, planning staff recommends approval of the proposed Ozark Sanctuary Cemetery conditional use permit with conditions contingent upon receiving approval from the Arkansas Department of Health. And these conditions remain unchanged since the time of your staff report. I'll be happy to take your questions if you haven't.
Any questions?
Otherwise, the proponent is definitely here and ready to give a quick presentation.
You men, you mentioned that the conservation easement group approved it?
The, the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust, along with Beaver Water District, and could be other organizations as well, have all gone together and, and established the conservation easement. Northwest Arkansas Land Trust, Beaver Water District, Beaver Watershed Alliance are all in support of this project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
But we're still waiting on the health department.
Indeed. At our technical review phase of, of project review, it was made very clear to the applicants what the health department is going to require in the form of a submittal to them for their review, and, including one perk test per acre, which would be about 10 perk tests over 9.2 acres, and I've, I'm not sure how much a perk test costs, but multiplied by 10, plus the engineered site plans that would have to go along with that, they're looking for a little assurance that the county would be on board before they submit to the state, and go to the money to, to submit to the state.
Okay, so if?
So, the recommendation is of recommended approval contingent upon health department approval.
And if the health department doesn't approve it, then it doesn't go forward?
Correct.
Any other questions for Nathan at this point? Okay, is there anything, anything the proponent would like to add at this point? Okay, is there anything the proponent would like to add at this point? Okay.
Pardon me while I fumble just a second, I'm going to put together, I'm going to pull up their presentation.
Okay.
My name is Mike Ross, I'm the owner of the property in question, and just to address the land trust issue, conservation easement, we signed off on the conservation easement with the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust in July, it's completed. During the development of that, we did inform them from the beginning that we would like to include a portion of that conservation easement to enable a green burial cemetery. So they were agreeable to that and developed the regulations of the easement to allow that within there, so hopefully it addresses that a little more in there. So in other words, it was in the development from the start, also Beaver Water District, when they were looking at the conservation easement, knew that there was going to be a potential green burial site in there, and also gave their input, which resulted in some minor changes in what the land trust also wanted to have in there. Understanding this is probably a rather unique request for a conditional use permit, we do have a little bit of background information about green burial. Vicky Kelly is with the Natural State Burial Association, has been studying this for years?
Years.
Years, and this is the first opportunity we've had in the state to actually put into practice this unique opportunity that we currently do not have in the state as a cemetery. So let me scroll down here.
Want to let her take that on?
Yeah, I suppose so, you've done this presentation.
Don't go forward. Thank you, guys, it's going to get fun. Now, we're getting down to the dirt. This one's hard to read, but it is an example of what's different between a conventional, modern funeral industry type of burial and what Mike and Jane Ellen have proposed for how burial will happen on their property. The main things that are going to fly in your face and sound really weird, shallow graves, no embalming, biodegradable containers, and no vaults or grave liners of any kind, okay? So that's going to look different. There are questions that come up. People don't know what to do with this. It's which button goes forward? Yay, that worked, okay. So just the facts? It's legal. It's legal. Arkansas laws tells us 18 inches of cover from the nose of the corpse to the top of the grave. That's how the law is written, from the nose of the corpse to the top of the grave. That is an effective odor barrier at that depth. We have no known incidents of graves being disturbed in any of the cemeteries that operate this way. There are some in the United States, but none in the natural state yet. The reason it has to be shallow is that's where the bugs are, that's where the worms, the bacteria, the karen, the beetles, you know, the microbes. And the purpose here is to decay. The purpose of this type of burial is to decay versus being embalmed, put in a steel, hardwood, high dollar casket inside a concrete vault where you just kind of putrefy, it's a little bit different process. But we want to be dirt, earth to earth, and that's why this process. The concern we also hear is water contamination. You need to know that embalming, caskets, and vaults are not required by law, and they do nothing to protect water quality. That is across the board. That concrete vault is to keep the grave from sinking so that the cemeteries are easier to maintain, okay? That's the purpose there. It is determined by the American Health Organization, Pan American Health Organization, that the decaying process is not a pathogen, it's a natural process, and the Ozark Sanctuary Cemetery will operate in full compliance with all the regulations, requirements that are set forth by the Arkansas Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Quality. So we are aware. And when I say we, I like to call myself the educator and the informer, but I've often been called the instigator, but I am not the property owner and I'm not the applicant, but I am the one that has talked about it and encouraged people to look at this as an option, just as an option. When we talk about a natural cemetery, there is an organization nationwide that has taken on the task of certifying, and they certify at three different levels. So what I would like to show you right now is that the first level looks like a cemetery. Isn't this lovely? This one's out in Tennessee, this one's out in Nashville, Tennessee. It's a hybrid cemetery, and that means it's just a portion of an existing conventional cemetery that they've set aside where they allow the no embalming, the biodegradable container, the shallow grave, the no vault. But it looks like a cemetery, you can still put up a headstone, you can still take out those artificial flowers on Decoration Day. The next second type is called a natural cemetery. Again, no embalming, biodegradable container, shallow grave, no vault, but also no pesticides, no herbicides, no invasive plants or species, and no upright monuments. So these look more like a park, like you would go out and take a stroll at the park, you see the little headstones laying around there. It's a different look, and it's more environmentally friendly. Now, what Mike and Jane Ellen Ross have set their land up to be is this one, a conservation cemetery. It does all that the other two do, but here, there are no markers, GPS coordinates. So we're taking the oldest, most ancient type of burial, and we're giving you a way to type in your coordinates on your computer and go visit grandma's grave from your desk. But we'll find it, and we'll always know where it is, and there's record keeping, solid record keeping. The property is dedicated to a land trust and a conservation easement. It is maintained as wilderness. It is meant to look like the woods. Jane Ellen has a vision in her mind of a woodland, a meadow, a grassland with wildflowers. And so that's significant because there are only seven conservation cemeteries in all of the United States. There are 23 natural cemeteries and 42 hybrid cemeteries, and these have all been given their accreditation from the Green Burial Council. My organization, the one that's been the cheerleader for Mike and Jane Ellen and what they're trying to get accomplished here, we also want you to know that we support working with the industry. We want the industry to understand exactly what we're doing and how their businesses can participate. That they, we want them to come, meet our criteria, and tell their customers, if you want this green burial option, we know where to go. So we want to work with the industry. We want to see Ozark Sanctuary Cemetery be the first of its kind in the state of Arkansas. Will put us on the map, how does that sound? Northwest Arkansas is on the map, guys. Top 10 best places to live, best places to live. How many times did we see that headline go by? One of the nation's top 100 in growth of the metropolitan area. That means there's a lot of people coming here, 31.7 a day, nearly 32 people a day. We're only losing less than 10 a day are dying. But we're telling you that once they hear what we've got going, they're going to understand that it's also the best place to die, or at least to be buried. And we have to plan ahead with that kind of development, with that kind of influx of population. Let's do some forward thinking here. The one on the left, that's a Jewish cemetery in Brooklyn, New York that was started before the Civil War. The other one is a veteran cemetery. Our veteran cemetery just expanded, we added about 2,300 more graves, but that's not going to handle all of us. And what we want to make sure is available is our name on this list, that that's what green space looks like in Northwest Arkansas. And we're making land sacred by putting bodies in it, and it will never be developed, and it will always be beautiful, and it's the natural state deserves a natural cemetery. This information was put together by Arkansas National, Arkansas State Burial Association. Okay? Do y'all have any questions for me? And I have one handout about soil and water, if you're interested, and that's from the Green Burial Council as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, is there, I guess at this point, we'll look and see if there's anybody from the public that would like to address us. Come forward, please, please state your name.
My name is Annie Latell, I live here in Fayetteville, and I'd just like to speak in support of having this option because I personally would like to be buried in a green burial cemetery. I think it's good for land use, for the environment, for a lot, taking up more land in cemetery space, we can leave it open, because as the bodies decompose, then new bodies can be buried in the same places, which is not how it works in our regular cemeteries. So I would just hope that you would support this and allow them to feel encouraged to go on to the state Health Department to pursue that. I think it's wise for them not to spend that money until they know that you would support it as long as the state health supports it. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, come forward, please.
My name is Noel Neber, Prairie Grove area, and I'd like to speak on two, or fourth, regarding to two things. One is that choice is a good thing, and while I realize lots of people don't like this idea, they'd rather be in a traditional cemetery, that's their choice, but those of us who would like to be in a natural cemetery, we should be able to have that choice. I'm a potential user of that cemetery, I would be there if it's needed at the time of my death. The second thing is that I personally know Jane Ellen and Mike, I know they are both detail-oriented people, very responsible, any management that has to be taken care of when this passes will be taken care of properly, so there'd be no problem with that. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Patrick Deakins, I serve as Justice of the Peace for District 5 out there, and so I appreciate the gravity and the responsibility you have on this board tonight. Couple things, I've received a lot of calls and comments and concern of this, so that's why I'm here to represent my district. Looks like we're kind of in a chicken versus the egg type thing here with the Arkansas Health Department approving this, and what I would implore you to do is, I would like to see that come back and approved before you guys approve this conditional use permit, that's what I would like to see, assuming this ever comes up to the quorum court level. Due to the fact that there might be some additional comments or requirements that the Health Department has, and I would like for you guys to monitor that, I want you to remember that you're the closest governing body in this permitting process to the citizens of Washington County, and it might be important for you to review that and see what else they come back with. Also kind of concerns me that we have stated that there's no other cemeteries like this in the state of Arkansas. While I'm not against change or innovation, I would think that we'd want to give the Arkansas Health Department enough time to fully consider this and give back any requirements. And finally, I have to finish with this, while I appreciate the excitement of the applicant, I think for the most part, when I talk to people out in District 5, they're looking not to be put on the map. So what I'm also asking you to do is not make Washington County the experiment here for something new in Arkansas, make sure this is vetted out, make sure that we can get behind it. So I appreciate you guys, thank you very much.
Well, so I'm a science-based person, I think nature cleans everything, I mean, we all die, and let's say I have a virus, you know, the earth, the microorganisms in the sun can clear that, I mean, we're all living in the same planet. I just can't, I can't get behind any fear with something that's natural, so I would request that you not make a judgment from a fear-based position because it, I mean, how many dogs have I got buried on my property? There's never been a problem with that. Are human bodies are part of nature, we shouldn't be that afraid of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annette Cornellison, I am co-president, secretary, management of Joyce Cemetery. I did not get notification of any of this, and granted, it's there by our cemetery where I was born and raised. My understanding, when they first approached me, is that it had to be connected in some way to an existing cemetery. That was my, that was what was brought to my attention. I disagreed, I said we weren't interested. Sorry, bit nervous, I'm not the cheerleader that they have, I do have some squad, cheerleading squad behind me, but I don't want to be put on the map for that. I don't want our area to be put on the map, and yes, we are the natural state. That's, being the first natural cemetery in the state of Arkansas concerns me. To me, that alone is an issue. While everything is going green, I, this is something I just have a hard time agreeing with. Being close to our cemetery, I think it hurts our cemetery. And yes, it's an old cemetery, lots of family, we maintain it, we take care of it, it just, it's not good for our cemetery's reputation, it's not good for our community. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Gary Ushry, and I'm the other director of the Joyce Cemetery. I have a few issues on this matter. We only bury someone 18 We only bury someone 18 inches deep. I have a photo, I live within a half a mile of there, of a black bear on my camera photo. He comes up on this. He digs it up, or a coyote, or a dog. He takes one of those body parts to the neighbor's yard. Now we've got the deputy sheriff involved. Is this a murder victim? Or is this a body from this cemetery? In these pictures that they're showing you, this property does not look that way. It is a thistle farm, if you know what thistle is. They are not going to maintain nothing. We work hard to maintain ours. For hundreds of years, we've come a long way in burial. Now we're going to do a 180 and go back to where we started? To where we just dig a hole and put somebody in it? I don't see that where it's going to help our community. My great-grandparents are buried in this cemetery. My grandparents, my sister, they would all be a no on this deal. This is a community cemetery for the people in the community and the families in the community. Not for anyone that wants to come be buried there. We will allow that through proper channels. We require a vault. Simply because if we go back to digging another grave, they're all marked. If you hit that vault, you, which I've talked to two grave diggers today, they wouldn't touch this with a 10-foot pole. It's a, I'll tell you what one of them said to me. "It's a landfill for bodies," is basically what it is. And these pictures they're showing you, that property doesn't look that way. There's 10, 12 donkeys that run loose on it. That's what's going to maintain these graves. And I don't see where this is feasible for my community that I live in. And these 14 people that you have a yes on, I don't think they live around this. I think they're people from outside. Because the people that I have talked to today, which I was just made aware of it this morning, are all a no. And they were more than 14. They didn't even know this was going on. They all live in District 5. I live, as a crow flies, less, probably less than a half a mile. I maintain the cemetery. My grandfather maintained the cemetery. We did the best we could, we still do, to keep it the way it's supposed to be. That's why we require vaults, proper burials. That's your choice. If you want to be green-buried, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. You can be cremated, that's fine, too. But the people in our community choose to be buried a different way. So on this side of the fence, you have to have a vault. On this side of the fence, literally, you can just dig a hole and put them in it. I don't see where that's justable for everybody. This has been tried in Elkins. This has been tried in Weddington, the way I understand it. They've all been shot down. Why would we, why would we move forward with something that is totally, I'm sorry, but off the wall? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I saw some other hands. Okay.
My name is Marcella Terry. And I didn't, I'm not originally from Northwest Arkansas. I moved here two years ago for my health. I was diagnosed with a very serious illness. Came here, found a wonderful doctor here, and fell in love with the area. And what I love about this place is that it is so natural. I lived in Indiana. The environment was terrible there. I had, you know, terrible health problems there. Came here, and being in this area is so much better for my health with all of the trees and the nature and everything that's here. I am extremely sensitive to chemicals. And I also, I love being in the woods. I love hiking. I was not able to hike when I came here because I was in a wheelchair. This has been, this is my home now. I do live here. And being buried in a place where my body can decompose as it is meant to, by God, in this environment is exactly what I want. And I'm, I don't see, I understand that this, this is the way that things have been done for a long time, with the vaults and the embalming and all of that. But it's not the way that I would choose for my body to be respected and cared for when I'm gone. And I just want to add something else. I have a master of science degree. I, in the 1980s and 1990s, I was involved with social, social psychology research regarding HIV and AIDS. And I have worked as a biomedical consultant. I've worked in a wellness institute. I'm very familiar with viruses and bacteria, especially the one that everybody has been so concerned about in the past and the fear about very serious viruses and those things. There is no, there is no concern about that. Those viruses, if they, when the body dies, the viruses are going to die. They will be destroyed by the microbes. Many viruses are destroyed when they hit air. You put them in, into the dirt, in an anaerobic environment where they have no exposure to air, but they will be broken down by the other microbes and by the natural processes that go on in this type of cemetery. So I would just, I wanted to weigh in, give you my feelings on it. Hopefully, I will live a long time and enjoy this area on my two feet. But when that time comes, I would definitely be someone who would be interested in this type of placement for my remains. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am. I've got one over here, and then we'll try to get you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dolores Provaasa. And I, I understand that about 80 years ago or 90 years ago, the natural way to bury people was without embalming, without vaults, without, it was just dig a hole in the, on the ground, put them there. I just don't see what the, what the concerns are regarding the unsanitary conditions. Plus, precisely here, in the area that we're talking about, which is beautiful, I've been there, it's pristine, it's lovely. The burrows are also lovely. And they are not going to be there on the cemetery, by the way. We are surrounded by industries that are accused of heavy, heavy pollution. And they are, we know, unsanitary. What is a little plot of land with a few cadavers going to add to the mess that we probably have already? Nothing. This is absolutely a natural state, the way bodies are supposed to be disposed of. So I'm an enthusiastic customer of this would-be cemetery, and I hope that it is approved. Because otherwise, you're taking my options away. And I have the right to be buried, my final disposition of my body, the way I want to. And it's not in a vault, and it's not with chemicals in my body, and it is not in a wall, in a metal casket or anything like that. It's just throw me in the ground, cover me up. That's it. That's natural. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, there was a lady back here. Let me get her.
Good evening, board. And fellow citizens. I recognize that this is hard because there's both the scientific questions and the emotional and personal history questions. And they kind of come into conflict here. I want to speak to you primarily as two things. My name is Crescent Dragonwagon. I'm a Fayetteville resident. And some of you might know that I'm a cookbook author. And for some time, it has seemed to me that in order to love cooking for other people, you have to understand that life is inseparable from death. And it's as if before we were born, we signed some contract that while we were here on earth, we would eat the bodies of plants and animals and sustain ourselves through them. And that after we died, we would become food for other creatures down through the ages. In fact, when we walk on earth, we are walking on the bodies of dead plants and animals and dinosaurs and human beings. And it seems to me inextricable. And over the years, you know, at first I thought that cremation might be the way to go and your ashes could be scattered somewhere. But as I became more and more of an organic gardener and farmer and very careful about what I eat, I don't eat chemicals. Why would I want to be embalmed? Why would I have my blood drained and formaldehyde put in after death when I've avoided them so carefully eating them my entire life? Well, over time, I began to feel like I would like to be put in a Muslim sack with a drawstring on the top and plant it in my vegetable garden and have tomatoes come out, up out of me. I realize this sounds repellent to some of you here, and I don't mean to be disrespectful. I'm just very close to food as a part of life and death as a part of life, as a cycle that goes on and on and on. I've been widowed twice. My second partner was cremated and his ashes, there was an apple tree planted in his honor. And it was quite remarkable to me when I ate the first Honeycrisp apples that were from, from the tree that was planted on his ashes. So I know going down the line, this feels right to me. It makes sense to me. You've heard the scientific arguments. You've heard the emotional arguments. And I believe that those who want to maintain their cemetery in a particular way and have done so for generations and want, you know, concrete vaults or traditional burial, they should have that choice. So should others. So, you know, I wanted to speak as a cookbook author. I also, in the former place where I lived, there was a little, you know, family cemetery near me. And I loved to walk up there. I found it very peaceful to be there. And, you know, there were graves there from the Revolutionary War dating, that was, I lived in Vermont for a while, and it was near me. But I also wanted to speak to, you know, so often in these things, we get crazy about who is and who isn't in the community. And yes, the people who live right there, it is, in one sense, very much their community. It is right in their backyard. They do deserve consideration, as do the people who own the property. And yet, I tend to think that our community is larger than our immediate block, our immediate area. I tend to think that, you know, for example, when we consider water, everyone lives downstream of somebody. And I would encourage you to be respectful both of the literal physical community and the larger community of those who want the choice, who want the right, who meet the criteria, the health criteria. And I do think it's reasonable for them to get some kind of clearance from you before they expend the money to get the, you know, the perk test, the 10, 15 perk tests. Anyway, all by adding just a slightly different look at this. And I wish you wisdom in your decision here. And I thank you for listening to me and everybody else.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Or yes, sir.
My name's Kathy Skaggs. I really didn't come to talk, but since I'm here. I am very much for the green burial prospect. I would like that for my own self. I want to leave as little impact on the ground, in the earth, as possible. And this is it. This is it. Originally, I wanted to be cremated, but this is now the way I would like to go. I have been on this property. I have walked all through this property, down to the creek. It's beautiful. It is maintained. It is not a thistle patch. I can tell you that, straight up. It is beautiful. And it would be a wonderful place for this purpose. And I look forward to it. And I hope you can see your way to look at the information that's been placed before you. It's, this is not a, this proposal is not a competition. It is an alternative. And I think we need more alternatives. Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we got several hands. Sarah, won't you come on?
My name's, my name is Ralph Lamping. And my wife and I have been living on a piece of property for the past 30 years now, out Lake Skoye Way. And we have, my wife mentioned that, you know, our pet burials we've had over the years. Those we've had four dogs, two cats die over the years. We've had, we buried them on the property. And we've had, you know, no problems with wildlife or domestic animals digging up the carcasses. We maintain those little graves for our pets to remember them by. It's very pleasant. And, you know, we have bears in there. We have coyotes. And nothing's ever disturbed any of them. And I doubt if I ever dug as deep as 18 inches. Maybe I should have, but this all been fine. It's a pleasant thing to be able to go off into, into, down to wooded area and go to, you know, go visit a grave of some creature, somebody that you love who's passed away. And when I think how, I'm so accustomed to be able to visit the graves of, you know, my pet friends have died. It's upsetting to think that that option may be denied to family members and friends who would like the same option of having the burial in such a fashion. To many of us, a green burial is extremely important, extremely desirable. Makes it possible for us to accept the death of our loved ones more just seeing how things are going back into nature. And I just hope the board will take all these points into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Christina Devlin. I live in Fayetteville. I come to just share a personal story. My mom died when I was three. And my whole life, I imagined and was told that when she died, in the place of her grave, there would be flowers that grew. And when I had my kids, I told them that, too. That when you die, you become the earth and something grows. And it was only a few years ago when my dad died that I realized that not only is that not true, but it's not an option in a lot of places. And so we're here tonight to just say that we would like for that to be an option. And my kids love the idea of having compost, mom being compost. It's what makes sense and feels like the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we got hands everywhere. Let's see. Someone, yeah, come back from, let me, let me have the rest of the public speak, and then I'll let you come back, okay?
Good evening. My name is Larry Bramble, and I am a neighbor to the north of the proposed cemetery. And I do not know Mr. Ross. I'm sure that he's a fine man, and this has evidently got to be a money issue or opportunity for income, which I'm all for that. But if this thing is so safe, I mean, this is basically our backyard. And I know everybody's saying it's safe, and animals are not going to dig stuff up. I don't believe that. We live in a farming community. We've seen it all of our life. We can bury a cow in compost, and we'll end up with a hole like that. We're dogs and coyotes and stuff. Where dogs and coyotes and stuff, you know, we can bury it two to three feet deep and they still get into it. I don't believe that for a bit. If it's so safe, why can't we just put it in these people's backyard? I mean, if they want to be compost, let them put them in their own backyard. All these people that are from Fayetteville and Prairie Grove and all these surrounding areas want to come to our, our neighborhood and be buried, if it's such a safe thing to do, let them, you know, put it in their own yard. I mean, I, I just don't agree with it, but that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
My name is Debbie Dodd. I'm not a real speaker. I live in District Five, I guess, in this area. I am a member of the Burkhead Community Cemetery Board, and we plot our cemetery so we know what row and what space the individual wants. We treat the dead with respect. We make sure that they're, they, they're all involved in, in caskets, but that's to the family's desire as well. But my question that I want to ask is, are, is this new land going to be plotted to where they know where they've had one burial at, to where when a backhoe comes in to dig another hole, are they going to dig on top of that existing one? What are they going to do when they hit the bones to, you know? I just, and I know we are in natural state, but I think there's some issues with this. And I'm like, I feel like, Gary, this is in our neighborhood. I, I live just not too far from the proposed area. And when I heard about it, no, I'm not going to be buried over in Joyce Cemetery, but it's in my neck of the woods, and I'm on a board, on another cemetery board, and I don't want to have to deal with something like that. I want to be able to know where that's, that person is buried at, so when the backhoe comes in for the next burial, I don't have to worry about it chewing up an existing body. That's all I've got to say. I could say more, but I don't think it'd be appropriate. But thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Raydell Davis, and I currently live in Clifton, but eventually I will be living in, I'm, it sounds like about two hills over from the cemetery. And my kids, I understand that there's, it sounds like in the cemeteries that are similar, that it's been recorded that nothing's been dug up, but I don't want to find someone's foot, arm, leg brought into my yard. My dogs, right now, probably by now have brought up a whole cow, a piece at a time, because that's what animals do. And he's even brought a car bumper into the yard. But I do not want to find an arm or some body part in my yard for my kids to find. My kids will be running around on those hills around that property, and I would appreciate it to just stay where they're not going to be finding any other bones besides a cow bone or any other animal bone. I just, I, I understand everybody has their right to choose how they want to be buried, and I am completely fine with that, but I would ask that it be in an area, just remember that, remember, respect the people that is around that and that it's not going to be put in endangerment around that, and also, like I said, just not finding stray body parts in my yard. Thank you.
You've heard from a lot of people here tonight, all around Northwest Arkansas. My land actually borders the land to the south of this, all the way across. I could throw a rock and hit Joyce Cemetery from my back porch. My only concern is, I've got two big old dogs, and they draw dead animals up on my porch all the time. I just don't want my, my kids watch The Walking Dead. I just don't want them to see it in real life. So, is there a place for the cemetery in Arkansas? Maybe. Not my backyard. Maybe on a 200 yard, 200 acre plot somewhere in the middle of nowhere. I don't know if this is the best place for it. That was my really only concern, same as the last, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public before I bring the proponent back up? Okay, sir, if you want to come back.
I'm Mike Ross again. I just had basically two minor additions regarding the donkeys on our overall property. The conservation easement itself is 100 acres. The cemetery in question is about 9.2 acres. The, we kind of divided it up into three pastures. The donkeys have always been on the pasture with the house, have never been over in this other property. It's fenced separately, so there's no plan or intent to have donkeys in that cemetery area, no grazing animals of any kind for that matter, to address that issue. The burial depth, well, backtrack a bit. As far as procedurally, this, getting the conditional use permit is what appears to be the first step. There are, we looked at cemetery regulations. I got involved with this a year ago, looking at the state of Arkansas statutes under the Department of Health. It's a little confusing because it's, those had been amended just in the past couple of years, so it was, in researching it online, sometimes you're finding the old regulations versus the newer amended regulations. And there's quite a bit of overlap with the cemetery board and funeral regulations versus strictly burial regulations. But it is, all the, any approved cemetery in Arkansas has to be approved by the Department of Health, so that is a step that has to be gone through. You know, it's not over and done when the conditional use permit is granted. It's very much dependent on the approval of the Department of Health. They have a series of regulations that have been mentioned before. And I believe, and unfortunately I do not remember 100%, but I think the recommended minimum depth by the Department of Health is three feet. Different states have different regulations, obviously, so there's, when you research some of these things online, you have to be careful about which state has what regulations for burial depth. And also, I'd point out that is a minimum recommendation depth, burial depth. It can go deeper than that. Then also, even with the, if the Department of Health approves this, there's still approval required by the conservation, Northwest Arkansas Land Trust, who manages the conservation easement. They will look at what's been done. I, as landowner, am not personally going to run the cemetery. We will probably have a nonprofit group that comes up with a business plan to operate the cemetery, and I won't sign off on that if I don't agree with it. And that plan will also have to go before the conservation authority. So, we do have several steps involved. This is obviously not the final step by any means. So, I think that's really all I had to add to the general discussion at this point.
Thank you. One, okay, one, yeah, I'll let you speak one more time. Come, please come forward.
Just to clear up a fact, in the state of Arkansas, you do have the right to not be embalmed. We have several in our cemetery. If you are buried within 24 hours, you do not have to be embalmed. That is a personal choice. That's not something you're made to do. So I just wanted you all to know that you do have that choice to not be embalmed. No chemicals. You're put in a coffin, in a vault, and you're buried. That, that is an option, and you don't have to be embalmed. And, you know, we're talking about chemicals and all that. We have several in our cemetery that are not embalmed. They were buried within 24 hours or their death. That's, that's, that's in Arkansas law, so.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there any way I can wrap up?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Come forward.
I just wanted to mention that each cemetery is free to establish how they operate. There are cemeteries that require the vault. That's their requirement as a cemetery. But what we do is educate the public that it's not the law, and you can, you need an option of a cemetery that is operating differently. So a lot of times when I do presentations and I give programs, and the first thing someone will do is go call up a funeral home and say, "That woman said." Is that true? And the answer will be, "Oh, no, you have to have a vault," but they leave off in our cemetery. So I'm fighting a lot of misinformation. You know, when I talk about 18 inches, that's, we're going down four foot to lay the, the grave. I was just telling you the law. The law reads 18 inches from the tip of the nose to the top of the grave, but the grave is deeper than that. And the, the stipulations that we set, that we will devise for this cemetery, will be extremely stringent, and people will know ahead of time what they're coming into. There's also been discussion of the creation of a very ornate, wrought iron, heavy grate to be laid over the graves for about three months or so, until we, the family feels confident. If the family wants to have that added assurance, we can do that. And I just need to say that Poltergeist and The Walking Dead were not documentaries. You know? And respect to many of the people that have come before you tonight, respect of their own loved ones and their own bodies is very spiritual, and they are following the scripture of dust to dust, and they want to be earth, and burial is sacred, and there is nothing disrespectful about an ancient, age-old, fumme millennia, wagon train pioneers, settlers, the way they buried their dead. And we're just asking, asking to have the choice. Thank you for listening for so long!
Okay, I'll, I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the committee for discussions, questions, or...
You know, I, I'm having a little problem in that the way I see it, we're either approving a cemetery or we're not approving a cemetery. We have nothing to do with regulations on how people are buried or not buried or whatever. So, that's all in the, in the purview of the Arkansas Health Department and the state. So we're either approving a cemetery or we're not approving a cemetery. I, I hear a lot of emotions and stuff out here of how people are buried and, and all the things that go with it, but to me, are we going to allow a cemetery in this location or we're not going to allow a cemetery in this location? And that's, that's my opinion.
Other comments, motions, or...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the Ozark Sanctuary Cemetery CUP with a recommendation of that caveat on the Health Department.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will move on to other business, it looks like.
Folks? Folks? We're still having...
As far as other business goes, I just wanted to update you on our CUP and our administrative review changes. We're working with regional planning with Tim Conklin and Jeff Hawkins up there. Those two, myself and our planning department, working to add new zoning designations. So, soon, we will be presenting these to County Services Committee and then taking it on to the Quorum Court. But where we're basically trying to go with this is adding about another six or so zones to our zoning map. And at that point, we'll work on a, a future land use map, and we're going to get this program, this zoning and, and planning program, basically into more of a typical type of zoning and planning program, rather than the hybrid that we've been working with. Everything being a CUP, for example. Everything other than ag, SFR-1 being a CUP, won't be the case after some time, if, in fact, we do get this approved through the Planning Board, Community Services, and Quorum Court. And so, it's, it's, we're also working on modifying some of our code in order to take our more objective permits, like our subdivision, minor subdivision, and large-scale developments, and making them completely administrative to where we won't have to bring those to the Planning Board. It may be that we bring the preliminary to the Planning Board to get, to get approval of that. It may be that we not do that. It may be that we only bring the final. I'm not sure how that's going to look yet, but we're looking out to Plaski County, Sebastian County, Benton County, all of our cities in, in Washington County, and looking how they do it. And going to try to, you know, try to modify and try to bring the, the planning program into the 21st. And so, with that being said, we're looking at the review, administrative review of projects, additions to the zoning ordinance. And the next item, just want to let you know, we've got the, the next planning board meeting is coming up December 12th and January 23rd. And I've sent out the, the 2020 Planning Board schedule to you. Not sure if you had enough time to review that, enough to, to provide comments. If you'd like to provide comments, it's a good time for it right now. Otherwise, we can take those by email, however you want to do it. Yes, sir?
Hey, I'm just going to say you didn't have Valentine's Day on there. Looked good to me.
Not trying to get anyone in trouble this year.
If you need to comment right now, I'm okay with discussing the schedule. Looked good to me. Anybody else?
Looked good to me. Okay, good deal. Uh, the next step on that is we'll get that approved through County Services and take it to the Quorum Court and see what they have to say, and it's about that time. You know, we've got one more planning board meeting for the year. No agenda items, this meeting for the zoning board of adjustments, and that's it for other business. Thank you, guys.
I guess I will entertain a motion to get us out of here.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Well, that's first. Ding. Bob Doherty. Nice to meet you.
Patrick Joel Kelsey. You guys get to see a lot of... You did a lot more than we did. Email, phone, live, so forth.
I was, I was appreciative of his dedication to try to get them all in there.
Yeah, everybody needs to be here.
Didn't want anybody to say they left and didn't get a chance to say something.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for being here.